Twenty nineteen. My name is Pete Pacos. I'd like to introduce the members of our board.
Larry Murphy.
Forty-nine.
Mary Stone.
Leslie Matthews.
Martha Taylor, town planner.
Brian Winter, town council's office.
And I'm going to indicate that George Morse will be participating remotely in tonight's public hearing by telephone due to physical disability in accordance with nine forty CMR twenty-nine point one zero. All planning board votes will be by roll call votes. So George is right there, in case anybody can't see him.
Hi, I'm here.
Hi, George.
Hi, I'm here.
So I think we're going to start off tonight with a couple appearances. Is Eric here?
No, but his replacement is.
All right, okay, come on up, replacement for Eric. Microphone's right here, we're just going to have you kind of snuggle up next to it. I don't think we have our easel. Oh, you brought an easel.
I brought an easel.
Beautiful, we might have you leave it here for us, because ours develop legs.
I can pick it up tomorrow.
All right. And so this is for Eric Botterman, Millennium Engineering, Continued Discussion Regarding Preliminary Plans for Sixty-eight Green Street. Owner, Sixty-eight Green Street Realty Trust, Jackman Trustee. I'd like to introduce you.
In the audience as well.
Beautiful, would you like to introduce yourself, please?
My name's Chris York.
Hi, Chris.
I'm supposed to be here for the next one, that's probably not happening tonight.
Oh, okay.
It is not happening today.
Store away storage, though.
All right.
See you next month.
All right, wonderful. So let you set up and let you, tell us what you're here for.
Eric was here a couple months ago, and he's met with Martha earlier this week of the preliminary subdivision out here on Green Street. It's a three-lot subdivision. I'm not sure if you guys have seen this plan or not yet.
You've seen the one that was originally submitted on October sixteenth.
That's this plan here. This is the new one.
That's the new one.
We made a few changes based on the comments this week.
Right, most of the board members, not all, because of some email issues, have seen a slight revision, and I think this is a revision to that revision.
Yes. So this one shows revised driveway locations, they're wider, based on discussions with the fire department. And the cul-de-sac is now completely open. Instead of having a twenty-two-foot lane around it, it's all completely gravel in the middle. Those are the only changes we've made from the last plan. So we get three lots, they'll all be on septic, gravel roadway.
Not much else.
We'll have to file, probably have to file a notice of intent, get some wetland buffer disturbance, we may have hundred-foot buffer disturbance.
Right.
So.
Might be helpful if you could review for the board again the waivers that are being requested here this week.
Sure, let me see if I can read it on this side. A bunch of them listed. I can start with, the first one is section three, one seventeen dash eighteen A, number three, environmental analysis. The proposed development consists of three lots. This section, one seventeen eight dash eighteen C one G allows for waiving the requirement of environmental analysis for developments of five lots or less. Section four, one seventeen dash twenty-three is the table, general layout and dimensions, right-of-way of forty feet, and fifty-three feet is required. Section B of that same section, cul-de-sac, street, proposed cul-de-sac provides a hundred-and-ten-foot sideline diameter, ninety-five-foot roadway diameter, and twenty-five-foot gravel. There are a hundred and sixty-five feet, a hundred and forty feet, and twenty-five feet are required. And number four is the typical cross-section pavement or wearing section, and we're proposing gravel instead of asphalt. Number five, typical cross-section sidewalks, bikeways, we're not proposing a sidewalk. It says one is required on one side.
Sir, could you speak up just a bit?
Sure, sure, sorry, I'm trying to read it and bend over.
No, I understand that, thanks.
Can I hold it like this, does that help?
I think it's being blocked by the board. Not us, but.
waiver number six is one seventeen dash thirty-one, fire protection. Proposed development is not within either of these areas. Each home will be provided with an alarm system. Also, one other change we made, we originally had a cistern located on the site, and the fire department just said if we sprinkle a reach house, my cistern won't be required. Number seven, granite-bound monuments. That's something I think ultimately we can do. You know, we're asking for a waiver, but that's something I think we can probably do if it's, you know, not a big deal on our end, I don't think. Number eight is granite curbing. We're not proposing any, we're proposing a country swale along one side of the road, along the, I can't even reach it, along the directions at the thudley side of the road. We'll have proposed grass swale to kind of treat and take some of the runoff from the gravel roadway. So no curbing is proposed. And number nine, street trees. No planting of street trees. We're going to try and preserve as many of the trees as possible. I believe that was it, I don't think any have changed since then, nope.
So we're going with the gravel to avoid an impervious surface, right?
Correct.
Okay. Martha, are you comfortable with the cul-de-sac?
Yes. I had a conversation with the fire chief today, and they have reviewed it, and I think there was one concern they had about the driveway for lot one. The version that you got sent today earlier had kind of a hump at the cul-de-sac, and I believe that's been kind of straightened out, so they can get a truck right in there. And the cul-de-sac itself is, as Chris said, is now, has no island.
No island, yep.
Or anything like that, so they will have access. And the driveways were widened from, originally they were twelve feet to sixteen.
Sixteen, yep.
You know, in accordance with the fire department's request.
Okay.
So, and as you may recall, this was submitted back on October sixteenth, we did get an extension until next Monday for the board to actually take, you know, take action on it, because it was forty-five days for the preliminary plan.
Okay.
And this is not something that gets filed at the registry, it needs to be followed within a certain time period by a definitive subdivision plan, which I believe you guys are already working on.
Yep.
What's the reason for the waiver of the right-of-way width? I mean, I'm just eyeballing this, I don't have a ruler, but it looks like you got fifty-three feet there, pretty close to it.
Yeah, I don't have a ruler with me either, I think it narrows out about, thank you.
You're welcome.
Let's see.
It did come in handy. Forty feet instead of fifty-three feet, Larry?
Yeah, right, but I mean, if you don't have fifty-three feet, you probably have fifty feet at least, don't you?
It's pretty close to it.
Yeah, at that narrow point, we got about fifty, how do we do it more than, yeah, we got more than fifty-three. I believe we're taking frontage from the road, that might be why we're reducing the width, taking frontage on lot, not frontage, yeah, on frontage on lot three.
Where I'm going with this.
Lot one, two.
You could meet the fifty-three-foot requirement if needed, right?
It appears we could, yes.
Or close enough, right? Okay.
Any other questions from board members? Any other concerns from your perspective, Martha?
No, I don't, I don't think so. Again, there will be a definitive plan, which will allow to, you know, have all of this flushed out. Basically, this is to set the lot lines and the dimensions in case any zoning changes were contemplated, which they're not at this point.
Okay.
The lots are shaped the way they are, I think largely because of the septic systems where the pipes were.
Ideally positioned, okay.
Yep. There is one thing, there is a lot line change that's shown on here, right at the upper corner of lot, I think it's lot three, over to your, right above that.
This little bend?
That, yeah, that little sort of oddly-shaped sink. So that's going to, I talked with Eric Botterman about that, and that's going to come before us as an approval, not required plan, prior to submission of the definitive.
So the upper arm of that U?
Yeah, right.
Okay.
The parcel X?
Yeah, right here, parcel X.
Gotcha.
That lot, this will be combined with that.
Oh, okay.
All right. Is there, on this plan, is there room for a reserve, for reserve room for the leach field down the road?
Yes, we have to show reserve areas for new construction.
Okay.
I don't think this plan shows it ultimately, but we will.
No, I don't see it, that's why I asked.
Yeah, this just shows proposed leach field, but yeah, we have to show, we have to, you know, we do do test pits for reserve areas as well, so that'd be shown on future plans.
Okay.
In plans we submit to the board of health.
As the board of health seen this.
They, it was submitted to them at the same time that it was submitted to us, I've gotten no comments from them.
Okay, well, from an informational standpoint, I think we're, we're okay. Any other questions, Brian, anyone? Okay, Chris, thank you very much, we appreciate you coming in and pinching this, and we'll look forward to seeing you in the future with regards to the Newbury Storage.
It's January.
Okay, great.
So does the board feel comfortable taking a vote to approve this preliminary plan?
I think that would probably be something that we would feel comfortable with.
Because I think we need to do that tonight.
Yes.
Yeah, I'd move approval.
Okay. Second?
Second.
Further discussion? All those in favor?
Roll call.
Oh, thank you very much, thank you, Larry. We're going to have to do a roll call. George, are you ready to vote on this matter?
Yes.
Would, how would you say, sir?
Yes.
Very good, very good. Leslie?
Yes.
My dear.
Yes.
Sir?
Yes.
And Peter says yes.
Yes.
Beautiful, participation, I love it. Very good. Martha?
So I do have something to be signed.
Okay, we can do that?
So we'll do that.
At the end, very good.
Just don't let me forget.
Okay, great, thank you, Chris.
All right, thank you. I brought, Martha, I brought Eric Henry bring, five sets of plans.
Thank you.
Would you like me to keep this here a night for you?
Um, I don't, we're going to need it, no, but you can leave it, we'll just keep it here for, no, no, you should take it.
Sure.
You may not get it back.
You wouldn't get it back, that's just it.
Probably not, that's all right. All right.
It was last May, I'm not sure it is.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
All right. At this point in time, we're going to continue our public hearing. Special permit renewal application, Seacoast Canine LLC, Thirty-five Downfall Road, MAP, R forty-one, lot six, owner applicant, Jennifer Ford. Here we go.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
How are you, Ben?
Spark there. My name's Ben Timman, I'm the lawyer for Jenny Ford and Seacoast Canine, and I appreciate the board's attention and hearing us this evening. I have a handout that I would like to pass out, maybe I can just hand this to you, Brian. I think there are only six copies, so my apologies to the two newer members, maybe one of you could look on with another member.
We have enough, sure we do. There we go. Beautiful, yes. Yes, and yes. George, I'm sorry you don't get one.
Thank you, you can read it, it's on me.
Okay.
Although, Mr. Morse, maybe that you've seen this, this was a, an email that Jenny Ford sent to Martha on November tenth to follow up on some of the points that arose during the initial hearing session.
Right, no, I did distribute that.
Okay, thank you. So this isn't new information, but it serves as, I think, a useful outline on some of the follow-up points that I wanted to touch upon. I'm not going to touch upon all of them, because I think some of them will be repetitive. I'd like to start, actually, on the third page of the handout, which is Mrs. Woodworth's log from October thirtieth, twenty nineteen, which she.
Page three.
It's the last page of the handout.
But it says four.
So this is a log that Mrs. Woodworth went over at the last hearing, and I think maybe had turned into Martha or to the board as well. And the reason I want to go over this log is because I think it actually will help demystify some of the controversy over the number of trips that are occurring, and what types of trips they are. So as Mrs. Woodworth said, this particular log for October thirtieth shows a total of twenty-five vehicle trips to Thirty-five Downfall Road, based on the video camera that they have set up, I think four or five houses up downfall. And they start at eight oh nine AM and they end at three thirty-one PM. What I wanted to point out is that the highlighted sections of this show the business trips, and show the number of business trips falling within the limit of the current special permit. So for example, at nine twenty-nine, you have a Doc Gray sedan that arrived, and then it left at two twenty. Santa Fe came in at nine thirty, it left at two twenty-five. The Black Suburban came in at nine thirty-seven, it left at two twenty-three. And the fourth and fifth one of theirs, well, the Ford Escape and the Maroon Rogue. Those are five vehicles of non-resident employees that come in the morning between nine and ten AM, which is what the special permit calls for, and what Jenny has said throughout is the directive to the employees, and leaving between two and three PM, which is also what's called for under the special permit. Special permit actually just says, don't come before nine, and don't leave after three, but Jenny has given those one-hour windows to her employees. And this indicates compliance with that rule, and it's consistent with what we've been, you know, saying throughout. At eleven forty-five, the Black Ford Escape left and came back at eleven fifty-one, that's a quick lunch, but I don't know if the person went and grabbed a drink at the mini-mart or what they did, but that would be the sixth round trip, which is what the limit is for the current special permit. Now, as you'll hear from Jenny, she currently has, because of the transition that she has underway to the Salisbury facility, she currently has four, and sometimes only three, non-resident employees at the site today, because of the transition that's taking place, and that's why, because she anticipated that this would be occurring, that we've asked the board in the next special permit to reduce the cap from six round trips per day to only four non-resident trips per day. That is something that she feels comfortable she can abide by, is abiding by now, and will become easier as this transition progresses. But again, I just want to point out that Mrs. Woodworth's own log shows that as far as non-resident cars, that she's complying, that Jenny's complying. And there's nothing really that difficult to understand about it, she has a certain number of employees, three of them are here this evening, they have cars, we've let the police department know, as the special permit required, what cars those are, and they come once, they stay, and they leave. Does sometimes, you know, does someone leave to get lunch occasionally? Yes, I think that's something that, as we maybe get further into the meeting this evening, we can talk about, you know, given that they're off the clock, and how that might be accounted for. But I do want to point out that that constitutes twelve of the twenty-five trips that Mrs. Woodworth talked about, and those are completely consistent with the special permit. Now, I didn't pick this day, the neighbor did, but as Jenny's been saying all along, this is how her business operates. So this is a very consistent, and I think even Mrs. Woodworth said, that this is a sort of a typical day, in her opinion. So then, that leaves thirteen trips left. Two of them were Carol LaRocque, the animal control officer, as is noted, because she happened to do her inspection that day. Six of them are Jenny. So you see on here where it says Jen Ford SUV, Jen Ford SUV, et cetera, she lives there. You know, a resident of a house that comes and goes from her house six times a day is pretty modest, pretty normal. I think that pretty much everybody on Downfall Road, if someone were to clock their trips, it wouldn't be, no one would be surprised to see that someone was coming and going from their house six times. I come and go from my house probably twelve times, I mean, it's, that's not at all unusual, nor is it something that the board is seeking to regulate. So that, that's eight, plus the twelve is twenty, so now we have five trips left. Three of them, which are the Black Suburban at eight oh nine, the first trip, and the Black Suburban at three thirty-one, the last trip, are Chris, Jenny's brother, who also lives there. And as Jenny has said before, you know, because he lives there, when he leaves to go pick up dogs from clients, obviously he has to leave the house and go and get the dogs that he's going to work with, sometimes he's in Salisbury and so on. But again, three of those trips, the other one being the Black Yaris, which is Chris's car, at one twenty-five, the Suburban being a Seacoast Canine car, but driven by Chris, are his. So now we have twenty-three of the twenty-five trips, which I think are easy to understand, there's nothing confusing about them, to separate resident trips from the non-resident trips, and then the two from the, from the animal control officer. And then finally, that leaves one round trip by Dory, who's sitting next to Jenny, at ten thirty-four, and the Maroon Ford Escape, and she left at eleven twenty-three, and as I think may have come up before, and it seems kind of silly that we're getting into this level of minutia, but just to complete the analysis, Dory, you know, does work for Jenny, but she's also a friend of Jenny's, she came over, I think, to let a sick animal out, because no one was there to let this dog out. She came and she left. Now, is this somehow, you know, out of the ordinary with neighborhood comings and goings from a house? I don't think so. So I think that this particular summary is actually an excellent example of the activity that occurs, that shows, one, it's totally sort of normal with, you know, the non-business trips, the kinds of activity that's going on. And two, with regard to the business trips, that are the only kinds of trips that should be regulated, and that the board, I believe, seeks to regulate, they complied. So I thought that the log helped us, and it's consistent with Jenny's practice throughout the year, and it's actually lessened in intensity since October thirtieth because of the ongoing transition to the Salisbury facility. Jenny's going to speak a little bit more later about the driveway camera that she's put in place, and that these logs and these counts have become something that can now be independently verified by anyone. Jenny has made both Martha and Sam Jocelyn, I believe, aware of the fact that this exists, and there would be a means to validate and verify the things that she's been saying all the time, and she can elaborate on that, on that tonight. I would also just point out that as far as Sam Jocelyn's review goes, the last one he, the last one, and perhaps, well, it's not the only one, I think he did two, but the letter that he wrote to the board was in August. So we hope that we'll have the opportunity to have the special permit renewed, we can talk about what length of time that might be, that might make sense with the board. But given that Jenny has this new system in place, that takes, that hopefully will take a lot of the guesswork out of exactly who went into the driveway of Thirty-five Downfall Road, also the hazard light piece that we've introduced, that makes it crystal clear what, which vehicles are Seacoast Canine, that he can do a new review, and I think it would be entirely unfair to Jenny to base anything on a, one review that occurred in August before we introduced the hazard light piece, and now, you know, before also we put this driveway cam in place. A couple of other points from Jenny's email, following up on things that came up at the last meeting. If we go to the second page. There was a neighbor who stood up and talked about a porta potty. Again, I don't think that these are going to be decisive issues for the board, but there was a neighbor that said, well, there's a porta potty on the property, why is there a porta potty? There must be people staying, or employees. The porta potty is on Jenny's neighbor's property, it's not on her property. Larry Sturdivan, is Larry here tonight, or? So Larry, I think, could, can validate that if he needs to, but, you know, we would have, and maybe should have stood up at the moment of the last planning board meeting to say, hold on, don't, you know, the porta potty has nothing to do with Jenny's property, but we've clarified that. And so again, I wouldn't think that that would be a major factor anyway, but it, I think, is worthy of answering, not leaving out there, you know, hanging. A neighbor reported an issue with a Jeep Wrangler, not a Seacoast Canine employee or person. It was a, it's a friend of Jenny's who happens to have some kind of a magnet that says, I love my rescue dog, in the back of the car. And so this, again, is an example of, like any resident of any neighborhood, someone who has friends come over and they drive cars and they stay and they, they leave, and at the last meeting, that particular Jeep Wrangler was identified by someone as possibly one of Jenny's car, and I think the question was, well, you know, now there's a Jeep Wrangler delivering dogs, it isn't. And again, Jenny can tell you exactly who the people are who come to the site to work at it during the day, which currently, as I said, is between three and four non-resident employees at present. The goat issue came up last time, Goat Gate, so we don't want to address the goats. Jesse, who happens to be the person that drives the Jeep Wrangler, Jenny's friend, co-owned, co-owns some goats with Jenny, and while they were babies, Jesse, in the Jeep Wrangler, had to come and help wean these goats. And so there were some non-business activities over the summertime involving the raising of these baby goats, which I've seen are no longer baby goats, are, you know, strapping goats that live in an area of Jenny's property. Any single person on Downfall Road, the Woodworths, Mrs. Hogan, Mr. Robertson, any of them can have goats, maybe they do have goats, I have no idea, but it has nothing to do with regulatory issues under the special permit. And there will be no goat traffic relating to that, so I, but, you know, it's a fair question when a new animal was introduced into the, into the situation, whether somehow that was part of the business, it's nothing to do with the business.
There's no goat training going on.
There's no goat training, no goat yoga.
Okay, all right. Goat yoga.
It also came up about, at the last meeting, whether potential clients drive by the property to figure out whether they should hire Seacoast, or that they see the website on the internet. First of all, that's, Jenny can't control that, if somebody decides that they, oh, I know that there's a Canine training place on Downfall Road, let me go look at it, I mean, that, she has no control over that, A. And B, she doesn't post the address of her property on the website or any public forum, because it is her house. She doesn't want strangers kind of coming down and loitering, and she's very careful, as you know, to not have customers come there, except during this annual open house, which may change as well, given that things are transitioning to Salisbury, she may not even need that in the future, but, you know, to us, again, that's not really a relevant issue. So Jenny is going to speak a little bit more about the, again, the measures that are in place now to help make it easier to validate the counting of the cars. And one thing that we do want to introduce as a, as a potential alternative to the board is to consider, if you're not comfortable, if the four voting members, and we realize we need, you know, four out of four to have this special permit provided, if four members are not comfortable giving another twelve-month special permit, we certainly would like that, but if the board is more comfortable making it a duration of six months in order to enable Sam Jocelyn, for example, to come and to, you know, do an inspection of the drive cam feature, or physically at the site, to see that what we're saying is true, that people put their flashers on, that it's going to be the four non-resident employees, and sometimes only three, we think that would be a fair compromise, we think it would be fair to the neighbors, because the activity is scaling down, there is a new system in place, we don't think we've really had a comprehensive or fair review by the zoning enforcement officer, given that the last communication from him was in August. And so that may be a compromise that would, that would work for everyone, a six-month period. And so that may be a compromise that would, that would work for everyone, a six-month period, that at the end of that period, there could be, you know, another assessment of the measures that we've put, that we've put in place. So I think those were the only points I wanted to make, and unless the board has questions, yes.
Let's see, do any of the board members have questions, Ben, right now?
Actually, I do. If, I, I have several. And if, if you'd bear with me, Ben. I wasn't on the board originally, so some of this may be old news. But I'd just like to fill in some of the gaps in my own knowledge. How many people actually live on the property?
Two.
Two. And that is?
Jenny and her brother, Christian, who is sitting in the platter.
Okay, and so there, no other, just the two of you. Okay. Now, we talked about the goats. Are there any other similar type activities on the property?
I'll let Jenny rest. I don't, do you have chickens, or?
We have chickens, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Do you mean that would create non-business?
Yeah, I mean, I, I'm not talking about chickens you raise for your own consumption, but I mean farming-type activities, agricultural-type activities.
No, this time, the goats over the summer was our first sort of foray into any sort of husbandry. And future farming activities would really just depend on whether we're using the space for the business.
I'm sorry, I didn't quite follow the last.
So like, sort of what the plan is right now is obviously to get the permit renewed, but it is an eighteen-acre farm. So there are other avenues that the farm could take if the business wasn't there, but that's not something I'm really planning. The goats are sort of plenty.
I mean, I think there was some discussion about the as-of-right uses, say, of farm stand.
Right, right, exactly. And I think, given that it's the Residential Agricultural District, and as Jenny said, eighteen-acre farm, that there's certainly all kinds of agricultural activities that she could do as-of-right, but she's not doing any of those things right now, apart from, you know, having goats on the property and some chickens, nor does she, you know, want to do that. That's not any part of her.
But if we were to permanently grant the, the special permit, there would be nothing to prohibit her from those activities in the future.
There'd be, there's nothing to prohibit her from engaging in as-of-right zoning activities. Correct.
One of the, actually, the Mr. Sturtevant, I think, was here, who wrote a letter in support, mentioned two dog care operations in Downfall Road. Can anybody expand on that? I wasn't aware of a second operation.
I, I'll, I, it would be dangerous for me to give details.
I can explain it.
Okay. I'm sorry.
No, I said I could explain it.
Okay. So should, I, I won't, then?
You don't need to.
Okay.
Alright.
Do you have any other questions, Larry?
Oh, yeah. And talk a little bit about, I know it's in Jenny's recent letter, but about how the dogs are restrained in the vehicles.
I'll have to, I'll defer to Jenny on that.
Yeah.
Nope, hold on, yep.
No, you don't wanna do that now?
No, 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 'cause I, I gotta, just, let's get Ben here.
Okay, alright, I guess I'm, I'm good with Ben.
Okay, sure. But we'll, we'll, we'll remember that. We'll, we've gotta answer the dog restraint question. Thank you.
Les, do you have any questions for Ben?
No, I don't have any.
Um, so I just wanna understand, yeah, I wanna understand, Ben, that what, what you're proposing is we're gonna be going from six trips down to four trips a day.
Yes.
Okay. I'm sorry?
Four round trips, right.
Round trips, right. And I wanna understand, the black, the Black Suburban is actually a Seacoast Canine vehicle. So when that's, when that's rolling, that's a Seacoast Canine vehicle.
Well, ye, yes, it is. And, and Christian Ford, who lives there, drives it, and so...
So this is, so you can see how this is kinda like, you know, a little slippery?
Right, I, I don't know, you know, I think there's probably ample ways to, to address it. But yes, it is, it, it, it says Seacoast vehicle.
Alrighty. Okay, so, describing to me what's going on with, we talked about, last time, we heard about a transition of the, of this business going to Salisbury.
Yes.
Where are we in that process? Where's, what does that look like?
Salisbury opened right around, what, October fifteenth, November first?
The first weekend of November.
Okay, first weekend of November. So it's up on Rabbit Road, I believe, is that right, in Salisbury? It's an predominantly indoor training facility with a small amount of outdoor space. And more of the customers' dogs are being brought there on a daily basis, and fewer coming to the farm.
Right. So, and I think, if I remember correctly, in the discussion, there was also talk about maybe looking for another parcel that might have more outdoor space, or did I misunderstand?
I don't think that's, I think that maybe it was when Jenny was weighing Salisbury versus other things.
Okay.
But Salisbury is in place. She has, I think, a two- or three-year lease. Yeah, there, and it's up and running, and...
And that space is how, a large space?
It is a large space. I don't know how many square feet. Forty-two hundred square feet.
So if we, if we try this six-month test, what if that fails? What if we, you know, at six months, we say, "Hey, look, it's not working"?
I mean, I think the board would probably vote to not extend it. But I think right now, well, my very strong feeling is, A, there'll be verifiable and ample information on trips, which is obviously the biggest issue, on which the board can make a decision based on the system that Jenny has in place, which she'll detail for you. And I'm also confident that the board will find that she's complying, because, you know, there's no, there's nothing hidden here. There's no secret employees or secret trips coming in and out. It's her employees. They have the same routine every day. They do what they do. And I grant you that, you know, we probably have to figure out the lunch piece.
So let's, let's talk about that, yeah. So we have a couple of employees that, are there three employees during the day?
So my understanding, and Jenny can correct me, is that Christian works at the location at least three of the five days per week, and sometimes four of the five days. So therefore, you know, as a resident, he's not, you know, counted. On one of the, one or two of the days that he's not on Downfall Road, because he's in Salisbury or doing other things, there is, that's when the fourth non-resident employee comes, because there's always four people full-time right now at the site, but at least sixty percent of the time, one of those four persons is Christian.
Okay, so there's always at least three non-residents.
Correct.
Okay. So we talk, let's talk about, you brought it up?
Yes.
And we'll, and we'll talk about lunch.
Right.
Right, you know, these folks are entitled to lunch, so they can, they do lunch, and they wanna do lunch, so they wanna go down, they wanna get to, go to the Rusty Can and have some good barbecue, and that's a good barbecue. And so one person goes, one, two, and three, four, and five, six. So we have six non-resident trips up and down the road, right, as a result of employment.
You're not counting lunch yet, or?
That's lunch.
Oh, you're right. If, if they're all going, leaving the site for lunch, which they, which is not the case.
Potentially.
Yeah, potentially. So a couple of things on, on lunch, and we kind of, we went over this last time as well. I guess there's two ways to look at the lunch trips. One is, should they be counted if they're not on the clock, which they're not, for lunch? So are they conducting business? I, I think that's probably how it should be counted, but I think, you know, at least the, the chair's view may be that the count should be based on how many trips are occurring because of this business being there. So if that's, if that is the view, then yes. Sometimes they leave the site to get lunch. Other times, they don't. I would not wanna be asking the board for, to double the number of allowable trips to account for a number of lunch trips that we know are not occurring, because, just like, for example, on the thirtieth, there was one, like, seven-minute trip of some kind, whether it was lunch or getting a soda. So most of them, most of the employees, as I understand it, do stay on-site. But as you point out, you know, Jenny is an employer, is a, suggests, anyway, you know, can't really dictate that. Now, we sort of look to the board's guidance on this. I mean, if the, my thinking is that lunch really shouldn't be regulated, because, you know, we're talking about a small number of employees. People go and they get food and they come back, that it's sort of de minimis. And they're not on the clock. That's sort of my feeling about it. But I understand that the board really wants to have as precise an ability to monitor this as possible. And so, I mean, if, 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 if there's a direction that lunch should be brought onto the site, again, that, to me, that seems sort of heavy-handed, but under the circumstances, Jenny would live with it. It obviously would mean that there'd be, you know, some delivery person coming and delivering lunch, which maybe, you know, isn't as good, because...
So it gets, it gets to a point of, the point is, just traffic on the road, that wouldn't be there if the business wasn't there.
Right.
Okay. So I'm, I just did quick numbers, and I'm, I'm not a math major. But six trips, five times a week, that's thirty trips. Fifty-two weeks, that's fifteen hundred trips. Quick math.
Right.
So that's fifteen hundred trips that might be occurring additionally in an area that wouldn't have that volume of traffic.
Excuse me?
If, if, okay. So I, I just wanna, I just wanna frame it, yeah?
No, no, I know you're just trying to get the facts, Mr. Chairman, but I would also point out that, you know, that doggy daycare is allowed by special permit. Obviously, we all know that. So the bylaws contemplate certain businesses as allowable businesses.
Under a special permit.
Under a special permit.
Which is, which is what we're talking about.
No, exactly. But given that it's a discretionary special permit of the board to issue or not issue, you know, the idea that any business is gonna generate traffic should have a mark against it isn't a fair way to look at it either, because the, it is an allowable business. So any business that is allowed by special permit is going to have employees, presumably, and is gonna generate some traffic, it's gonna have lunch issues. I think what we're, what we've tried to do, and I think Jenny has accelerated this plan with, you know, with the neighbors in mind, is transition as much of, uh, much away as possible. And we're left with, let's face it, not, and again, I don't, I don't wanna minimize the neighbors' concerns, but this is not a large amount of traffic by any kind of objective standard. Like, if a traffic engineer were to come in and talk about fifteen hundred trips a year, it's, it's, it's actually quite inconsequential statistically, but we understand that it's, you know, a quiet road and so on. But I know you're just trying to do the numbers, but I think that to have, to have the eight round trips per day, forty per week for business trips, and we're putting lunch to the side for a second, that is, I think, a quite reasonable level of activity for a business that, again, is allowable. And lunches, I mean, I, again, if the board were to say, "We're not, the special permit does not authorize lunch trips," we would live with it. I mean, we're not gonna, you know, appeal it on some constitutional ground of the right to eat. I might wanna do that, but...
All right. As long as we don't have to get into goat gate, I'm happy. I don't think I wanna go there. Okay. Is there anything else you wanna share with us tonight?
No, I, I think I'm all set, but unless, I guess each of the board members is, unless, I don't know if Mr. Morse had questions.
George, do you have anything you wanna ask?
Yeah, I have a question. I guess it bothers me that we haven't heard much about the scale of the business being reduced in this site as it might be carried up in the other location in Salisbury. So can you address that, or what it might be as a business plan item, over the next six to twelve months?
Did you hear that question? Okay?
Yeah, I did. And I'll let Jenny address it, 'cause she has a better handle on exactly, you know, how many customers, how many dogs have been transitioned to Salisbury. But I just, I, I will say one thing, Mr. Morse, is, which is that, that the operations have been scaled back considerably since Salisbury opened, to the point of, you know, where on October thirtieth, according to Mrs. Woodworth's log, there were the five non-resident employees making five round trips, and then one made a, a round trip at lunch for a total of six, which is what the special permit calls for. And now there are, most of the time, only three non-resident employees there every day. And maybe twenty percent of the time, currently, there's a fourth covering for Christian, who lives there. And that will continue to decline, which is another reason why the board may decide that a six-month special permit is appropriate, because from six months from now, presumably, the activities will have shifted even more considerably to, to Salisbury. But Jenny, why don't you?
George, did you hear that all, all of that okay?
Yeah, I, I heard that, that's fine.
Okay, so we'll have, we'll have Jenny come up and help fill us in on some of her perspectives.
But I would say that it would make sense to me to make the special permit extension six months instead of a year, so we get measured, measurable quantity that we can take a look at in six months.
Okay, all right.
George, sorry, I didn't give you a handout. Jenny Ford, thirty-five Downfall Road. Probably just to jump right into the camera. So I did email Martha. We did some experimenting with different camera options. This is a camera actually inside my home, facing out. And so there is the option to give remote access to that phone camera, sorry. It's, obviously, it's in my home, so there's a level of trust that people aren't turning the camera around on me in my kitchen. But obviously, Martha and Sam are two trusted individuals that I would be fine with having access to the camera. Essentially, it's on an app on your computer or your phone.
It's an exterior camera, right?
Yes.
Okay.
It's inside my home, facing outward.
Okay.
We're having trouble with the elements.
Gotcha.
And so I just gave you a few snapshots of what it looks like. I've been tracking it for the last month. It records two weeks at a time. And you set, you know, a range, which is the driveway, which is the picture at the top. Every car has to pass that to park, and so it's the easiest spot to catch each vehicle as it's passing the house. It records for twelve seconds, and then keeps each of those recordings in events by day for two weeks. So it does, it has, it's very clear, even on rainy, snowy days. The picture at the bottom was, I believe, it was snowing. And so you can pull up a day, you can look through each of those clips, and see exactly what is causing traffic. And so rather than being ambiguous and not knowing where cars are going, and which cars are there for which reasons, this is just, it seems to me, a very easy way for Sam or Martha to just spot-check remotely, without having to come park on the road, or come up the driveway and see who's in the driveway. You can move the camera as well. It, it will return to sort of the set location. But it is possible to kind of look up to the parked cars and see which cars are parked, and then it'll go back to where cars are passing. And so, you know, it's, in a sense, an invasion of my privacy, but I would rather be very clear and make it clear that we aren't, obviously, trying to hide something, because you can go on anytime you want and see who's at my house. And when they are, you know, when they're there, when they leave, which car it is. So if, you know, for Sam especially, this is obviously faster and more efficient than standing on the road for an hour and seeing who drives by. So that is one of the forms that I gave you. The other is just sort of, you know, basic guideline outline of what we're talking about. I know all the different trips and when and where can get confusing, so that's sort of your basic outline for that.
Questions from board members on the material that's being supplied now? I'm sorry, George, you don't have this information?
Yeah, I understand.
I could probably FaceTime you, and you could look at it, if you'd like.
And I can email a copy, too.
That's fine, I don't need it tonight.
Okay. Leslie, do you have any questions?
No, I think this camera's a great idea.
George? Hi, George. Larry?
Not on this, no.
I'm good.
So I have a legal question, since we're now being asked to, to participate remotely into somebody's private world, and the issues...
Offered, offered.
Off, yeah, the, the, yeah, that, the issues that that would, that would potentially create.
Well, once the, the board, if I may?
Yeah, Christopher.
Once the board closes the public hearing and votes,
Yes.
the board has no further role in this.
Yes.
So what really it is, is an offer to your inspection officials to take advantage of this for whatever they deem its worth. They may or may not use that as a tool. They may or may not find it reliable. They have to come to their own conclusion based on whatever evidence is front of them. So in, in terms of your sense of whether or not measures or controls could be in place to help the town and to make the conditions more self-enforcing, if you would, it's, it's a stone on that side of the scale. But in terms of whether or not it's effective, and how it gets implemented and used by the town, in terms of what would happen with this permit once it left this board, question for another day.
Okay. Jen, how much of the, of the business has actually been transitioned at this point in time? What, what percentage would you say to Salisbury? Thirty percent, fifty percent, seventy percent?
I would say between fifty and sixty percent.
Fifty to sixty percent. And we're looking at four, four trips, at four round trips a day.
Yes.
And we have three, three, three something, usually three non, non-resident employees, but up to four non-resident employees.
Correct.
And they... And they, if I remember from our conversation with Ben and yourself, they pick up the d- dogs, they park off-site, right? They park, park off-site or do they come on-site? Do they drive to the, to the site?
The, the, the non-resident employees live at their homes and they leave their homes, they're with the dogs, they come to the site with the dogs.
With the dogs, so they come with the dogs in their cars to, to the site.
Correct.
So they don't have to come to the, to the, to the site.
Correct.
Get the keys, cause all the keys are.
And all of our supplies and keys are at the facility, yes.
Yeah, they're, but that, so they come, when they arrive, they come with, with dogs. They don't have to then get there and then leave and go get the dogs and come back. Okay. Okay.
And probably a good time to answer, um, the restraining question. We are required by our insurance to have all dogs restrained in the vehicles. Um, depends on the car, but we use crates and doggy seat belts and barriers. Um, so they do all have to be restrained.
But you have to make a judgment call on what's necessary for any particular animal.
Correct. So we assign crates to certain dogs and seat belts to other dogs.
Questions, anyone?
No.
Um, I, I think this is a nice gesture and I think it's well-intended, but I think what it really does is underscore the problem with, with monitoring and enforcing this, the entire scheme, quite frankly.
It creates potential.
Yeah, yeah.
Brings a magnifying glass into it.
I'll, I'll tell you, if I may, what, what's, I'm kind of stuck on at this point. And we talked about the, um, number of trips, which is significant, there's no question about it. Um, I did a little bit different math, but, you know, taking Mrs. Woodworth's, um, log, uh, you're averaging a trip about every eighteen minutes during this peak period, for lack of a better term, the business hours. And that's fine. I mean, I, I can understand where people would be concerned about it in such a quiet neighborhood, but at the same time, in and of itself, doesn't strike me as that unreasonable. But there's also the type of trips that we need to look at, and this is what I'm hung up on, maybe you can help me. I- it's a narrow road. It's even narrower as we speak with the snow and, you know, uh, in the wintertime it gets narrower still. And you've got perhaps a large SUV, a small SUV with dogs in it who could cause a distraction for the driver. We've heard a lot from the neighbors about safety concerns, and, and I think those are legitimate concerns, and that's what I'm hung up on right now. Okay, it's, it's not just the number of trips, but the type of trips.
Mm-hmm.
And the potential for an accident, frankly. It, despite the, you can have the best drivers in the world, but if you've got three dogs and one of them should've been crated that wasn't, you got, you could have a problem, you know?
I will say, we do that many trips every day for the last year without that sort of problem.
No, yeah.
And we do try, you know, I do assign the dogs.
I don't question your good faith. Okay, I want you to know that. I think you're trying, I think you're a responsible person, but Murphy's Law, you know, what can go wrong will go wrong. And that's where I'm at right now.
Yeah, yeah. A squirrel that pops out at the wrong time.
Right.
Runs across and the dog reacts, like, I'd been there. And I had my guy restrained and she's still nuts. Scares the hell out of me when she barks. Sure. If that is your view, that it's the nature of the cargo that's being transported, then you have to reject every doggy daycare special permit application.
No, no, if it were Central Street or Main Street, that would be a different matter, but you're talking about Downfall Road.
Thank you.
Which is, which is part of the residential agricultural district where this is allowable use.
But we can't, we can't turn a blind eye to the physical conditions out there either.
Um, I understand that's your view, uh, but I think that to, to envision only the, um, the very worst-case scenarios of a squirrel crossing the road and so on, um, to me is, is quite a, uh, not a sufficient basis to reject a special permit, but, um, I'm not on the board, so.
Thanks, Ben. Um, Jen, you wanna say anything else?
Um, I think I just wanna reiterate that it is an eighteen-acre farm. Um, it's not a single-family home on the street. The type of business that we generate obviously is apart from typical agricultural use, but there are many subsequent uses of that space that would create traffic involving animals, um, that are by right. And so we are professionals at what we do, um, and I don't think that we should be denied on the basis that we work with dogs because we are trained to work with dogs. Um, but I do wanna be a good neighbor, um, and so the reduction in our trips, which, you know, even by that math, I wouldn't be able to do, but it would mean fewer and farther between trips. We don't see people out as much in the winter, um, you know, with good reason, there's a lot of snow and ice, and so, um, and we are willing, you know, we delay our opening. When schools are delayed, we sort of abide by the same weather precautions that a school bus would.
Appreciate, I appreciate that. So, you know, I'm just, I'm looking, I'm looking at this four round trips a day, round trips a day, and I'm trying to figure out how, how that's gonna work considering employees. And, you know, I used to run a business and I, I know I couldn't tell my people what to do, when to do. Um, so if somebody leaves and it's more traffic on, on the road than, and we start, people start saying, well, geez, you know, there's, you know, more than four round trips vehicle related to the business, that, that, that number gets difficult to maintain.
I'm not sure I, I'm not sure I follow. So are you saying if we say we're having four employees there that day and someone doesn't, or like an extra person comes, or are you talking about lunch? I'm not, I'm not sure.
No, if you have just four round trips, just on your dog, just doing your dog stuff.
Yeah.
Just, you know, and then your employees go out for lunch.
Right.
You know, there are more, there's, there's more than four trips related to your business on that road with just a minimum of three.
Right, which I'm, you know, I think we're working on different.
Yeah.
Definitions of what is a business operations trip, but if, you know, a business operations trip is defined in our, you know, six-month, one-year permit moving forward as trips that would not occur if there was no business on Downfall Road, it also goes the other way. If the business was not at home, I would be coming and going far more frequently because I would have to go off-site for a lot of the work that I'm doing and then back to my house because I have older dogs, I have other animals. And so I think it's a harder thing to compute because it will have sort of the reverse effect as well, and Chris too. Um, but I'm also happy to, you know, our employees, it's not a long day. And so if I need to provide microwaveable food or, you know, I live there, so I have a kitchen.
Yeah.
Those are things that I am willing to work around.
So we have fifty to sixty percent already transitioned off.
Right.
Uh, over the next six months, what, what will that number look like? Are you still going to be at a fifty to sixty percent or are you expecting to transition up to seventy percent, eighty percent?
What we do at the moment, um, is what I would like to continue doing. I feel that we've split our dogs based on where they do the best. Our off-site, our Salisbury location is primarily indoor, it's one large group. Um, that's not a great fit for all dogs. And so I would rather, obviously, the farm is the opposite, it's large outdoor spaces, small indoor spaces. Um, so right now, they're split by location. Our Byfield dogs, um, obviously come to Byfield, we don't drive them to Salisbury. So where we have the split right now is where I would like it to maintain, but the numbers won't change.
Gotcha.
Even if we needed to move dogs up to Salisbury.
Okay, you answered the question.
Yeah.
Perfect, thank you. Okay, um, if you, if you don't have anything else, what we'll do is I'll open, open it up for, uh, people from the neighborhood to, to comment. Uh, so what we're gonna do is we're gonna do this in an orderly, orderly manner for, for conversations. We'll ask people to come up, identify themselves and their address, um, say what they like to say, um, and, uh, if things start getting very repetitive and we're not getting new information, I'm probably gonna kinda quiet down the conversation a little bit. Um, so whoever'd like to come up, feel free. Come on up. The mic is yours.
Thank you. My name's Amanda Cannon, uh, thirty-two Downfall Road. Um, so one of my things that I have is, right now, in last year's agreement, special permit that you guys said that she could have, it states six resident and non-resident trips a day. That's plain black and white, that's what you guys agreed on, that's what she agreed on. Whether she took it and didn't understand fully what you guys understood, what you meant, um, she took it into her own interpretation, um, and that's hard for me as well because it's, you guys are the ones that put that out, she agreed to it and blatantly disregarded it. She didn't think that her trip should be counted. We have the trip of the black SUV coming at the exact same time around the bus stop. Again, just like you stated, that's a commercial vehicle that they only use for the business. So I think that that needs to be counted as a business trip as well if a business vehicle is driving on the road. Um, so then also when we have, my kids were outside for two and a half hours the other day, what, yesterday, day before snow day? I understand that she delays, but my kids are outside playing in the snow. They're walking to Grace's house. That road, just like you guys stated, gets narrower and narrower as the winter goes on, and I have a ten-year-old walking the street of Downfall Road, walking to the neighbor's house, going up to, my kids walk over to Elizabeth's to hang out with her. So it's, the kids are out during the winter, they're out all summer long, they're out on half-days, every single month, Triton has a half a day. So I understand that you do and I appreciate them not being there during most of the bus time, but the kids aren't in school five days a week, every single day. And I think that you guys understand that. Um, again, the trips and her just not being compliant to what, you guys have Sam's testament, his letter blatantly saying that she's not listening. We have, she's even said that she doesn't follow that because her trips and Christian's tri- trips don't count, but in the letters, it states that it should. So I think that giving her another six months or a year, she's already proven that we're not going to follow or take into interpretation what she needs to do to fit it to her situation. Um, so giving another six months to change, I'm not too sure, um, but I just think that that would be a little redundant to give somebody something that, it's a special permit, it doesn't have to be permitted. You guys are the ones that do it, so that's it.
Okay. But, yeah.
Can I ask a couple of questions?
Yeah, you're more than welcome to.
Uh, how many kids do you have?
I have three.
And I, I think you testified on a prior occasion about an incident that, uh, you thought your children were at, at some risk.
Uh, yes.
Yeah.
My youngest, she's five, she's here.
Um, how many other kids live on Downfall Road, do you know, approximately?
On Downfall Road, we have my three, I know that we have, Doug has two grandchildren that live on there. Um, and they also have a basketball court that's right, uh, near the street that they're always out there. Um, and I know that one on the corner, she has her grandkids over every day. Um, so there's, and they're all younger, I think, than mine. There are like three of them there that go there on a daily basis. Um, and then we have two high schoolers over on the next street, Lenway, is that Lenway? Yeah. And then also a ten-year-old that's over there. We also. It, well, and then we also have a blind young adult that walks the road all by himself on a regular basis.
I was down there today, actually, drove down and I saw a sign that said something about caution children exiting. Do you know what that is?
So that's, um, the Robinsons, their, uh, driveway actually cuts from Downfall to Lenway. So that's the driveway that the kids can ride bikes on, they randomly dri- walk through and through, um, and unfortunately, that's right on the hill. Um, so you can't see children, he's, every so often will have a cone out there as well that you can't see once you come over. There was a point in time last year that you guys actually went down to the facility and we were playing on the road and somebody literally almost hit my daughter as we're all standing out in the road because you can't see over that hill. Um, and it's so narrow, so like, there's only one car that can fit, but the kids are free to use that cut-through as much as they want. He's always opened that, I think, since I was in high school. Um, it's always been open, um, for us to be able to use that and the kids. But they also go down, when they're riding their bikes and stuff, uh, the two girls, they'll go all the way down and around the whole thing, so. Yeah, um, Doug's, Jamrin, is that his last name? Uh, his grandson actually came out of that way a couple of years ago. Um, he was, uh, hit, he, thank goodness he had a helmet on, but he was on his bike and a car was actually coming over that hill, just any normal, it was somebody that lived, I believe, at the end of the road. Um, and unfortunately, he was hit and struck off of his bicycle. Um, and again, that's a res- that's something that's not increased traffic, that's something that, just like you guys were saying, a squirrel can cross the road. My kids play basketball at the end of my driveway, that's where the basketball court's set up. I don't know how many times they have to go running past that big huge rock to go get their basketball, or we're playing baseball, or we have tennis. Um, my kids play all these activities outside that, that is a lot more plausible and conceivable than a dog getting upset about a squirrel, but a ball going through, going by, or children running out, that is something a dog sees a bunch of kids playing in the yard. I don't know what dog's not excited about it. Um, we have people that live around the area that walk their dogs. That's gonna get a dog excited and could distract a driver. Um, and it's, it's scary, um, to have my small children walking to and from the bus or just playing, playing outside, um, on a snow day. They were outside from, I wanna say, one o'clock till three o'clock yesterday. We got the six-foot snowman out there right now, um, but they've been out there playing and that's at peak time of everybody leaving. And I can't tell my kids, no, you can't play outside, 'cause, and again, these are things, totally understand. I drive up and down the road a lot, I have three kids, we do through, five different activities, I understand that. Um, but if the business wasn't here and she had to drive down at lunchtime to let out a dog, that's a resident doing a residential trip, that's not a commercial business, that's not a business, that's a normal living situation of somebody having to come home. My daughter last year was in half-day preschool. I left at lunch and I came right back, but that's not, I don't, I'm not doing that, I don't have other people doing that fifteen times a day. Um, lunchtime, they, I understand that obviously people need to eat, I'm not crazy, I eat lunch, I'm pretty sure most of us do. I'm not saying not to eat lunch, and I'm not saying that they shouldn't be able to go anywhere. I'm saying that a business on a dead-end road where children can be playing outside or different activities can be doing on the road, having cars coming by at lunchtime is, that's added traffic that would not be there, and you guys have even agreed, it wouldn't be there if the business wasn't there. So some people may not think fifteen hundred trips a year is very big, but when I live at the end of a down, dead-end road and there's only three people that live past me, that's a lot of traffic. Um, especially on a road, at one point, you can only fit one car. So within eighteen minutes of each other, they're doing those trips, what's the chance of one of us having to come out? That's an hour of time that I'm sure that somebody else is coming out or going. Um, same with at the end of the day. I have to drive to the end of the street or my babysitter walks, um, to pick up the kids. And there's been multiple occasions that cars are driving on the road that wouldn't be there necessarily, so. Any other questions?
Not for me.
Thank you.
Thanks. Someone else, anyone else like to make a comment or share some information?
Elizabeth Woodworth, nineteen Downfall. So when I did that, um, the log that I brought in last October thirtieth, whenever the last meeting was, um, I was mentioning the log because I was really impressed by the fact that we do live on a dead-end street and it's a residential street and the only people who go up and down the street typically are people leaving their house to go to work and coming home. I mean, there's some people who are either unemployed or older people who don't go to work, but, so I just kept that log because I was impressed that in that period of time, I don't even have it with me, but I think it was like eight o'clock till three-thirty, there were literally twenty-two, um, cars that went by my house and they were all related to her driveway. So that is a big difference because if I was at home gardening out front, nobody would have gone by my house if she didn't have her business. So my problem is, is it's a residential street and for you guys to sit up here and say, and, you know, allow a special permit for a commercial business in a residential area where a dead-end street with few people who live on the street, it's a big impact. And again, like, nobody's against you per se for having, you know, wanting to have a business. But for me, it would be more appropriate to have that type of business on Route One, which is where the majority of doggy daycares are on busy streets. Because you're not gonna notice a couple of people going by or a large amount of people. But that's like, in that period of time, there wasn't a single resident who went up and down the street except for them. I mean, that's a lot. I'm sorry. I mean, we've been there long enough that it's a big change. And I'm not sure that anything that you could say is gonna be helpful to you. Or, I mean, it's just you're allowing a commercial business, a large one, that's dependent on people driving. That's like, that's how they get there. So that's my point on it.
Thank you.
Anyone else like to provide any information to the board? Come on up.
Avery Woodworth, nineteen, Downfall. I just, I just wanna clarify. The my, our biggest problem is the trips. That's obvious what it is. So like Elizabeth said, it's a commercial business on a small dead-end street. There's a ton of traffic that was never there before. When she did that log, the reason she did it, I'm not sure she was totally clear. But when we count, like, on a regular day, just the residents, literally, there are very few trips. And then it boosts way up to the twenty-five or twenty-six, whatever it was. The biggest thing is though, how, if you extend this permit, how are we gonna differentiate between what she claims is a business trip and what we know is a business trip? Okay? That suburban going in and out that he didn't count in Elizabeth's log, it's a commercially registered for-the-business vehicle. It goes in and out six times. He's got a personal car that's still registered in Hampshire that he drives regularly also. So you can't have it both ways. And my concern is that, it's been two years. We've been fighting this for two years. So it has become fairly injurious and obnoxious and it has changed our quality of life, which it's not supposed to do. How are we, how are we gonna regulate this in a way that is fair and is legitimate? That would be my question.
Thank you. Anyone else like to come up and, come on up? Sure.
Alice McGonigal, one Johnson Lane. We've lived there for thirty-eight years now.
Sorry, your name again? I'm sorry.
Alice McGonigal, one Johnson Lane. My question is, this special permit. Are we gonna go through a special permit every three months, every six months for this business? I thought we were doing it once. If she did it, followed everything, okay, maybe allow it. It didn't happen. The end with it. Why give another special permit? So we could come back in three months and fight it more? I mean, it's just, it's a headache, basically. And now I have grandkids. There's others in our neighborhood that have been there thirty-eight years. They're starting to have grandkids come. So it's filling up with grandkids now. Our kids always played in the neighborhood. That was why we moved there. Three dead-end streets. We didn't have to worry about cars. Everybody watched out for each other. And we continue to do so. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Larry Sternevent, I own property on Downfall Road, thirty-one and thirty-three. I gotta say, I feel very unsafe now on Downfall Road. I didn't realize it was so dangerous. Having been in Quincy today on Hancock Street, building six-hundred-and-ten units. I think I feel safer over there now after what I've heard here today. I gotta say, I'm kind of astounded. And I, I think there's a zoning, there's a zoning, right? So we have zoning and everybody has their opinion. I can only tell you, the day I bought that property in two thousand and nine, two people stopped to see me five minutes after I got out of my truck. To let me know that I better watch myself 'cause the neighbors wouldn't appreciate anything I wanted to do there. And they'd fight me, okay? I moved a driveway. Forty people showed up for a meeting over moving a driveway, okay? Because they were given bad information. You know, this issue seems to be a lot like that. I mean, we either have a use or we don't have a use, right? We pass some zoning in the town or we don't have zoning in the town. We have a use allowed or we don't have a use allowed, right? So I guess, as I said last year, okay, we have to pick our poison as to what we're gonna have on Downfall Road. Okay? Sell the property, we end up with a forty-B application. What are we gonna do then? Okay? Is it an agricultural-related, related business? It is, right? We're watching dogs, right? We have other people on the road watching dogs. I'm all for both of them. Okay? But we certainly shouldn't take, I mean, I'm gonna say, when I lived on Downfall Road, I probably made up the number of trips we're talking about with my family alone, right? We talk about a hazardous driveway, you know? I don't know, I'm a different kind of person. If I had a hazardous driveway, instead of trying to get everybody who lived on the street to conform to my wanting to have a hazardous driveway, I would've filled in the driveway. That's just me. I operate in a different method. I have a different thought process, okay? I'm interested in helping people and promoting people who are interested in trying to make a living. We have other people on the street trying to make a living. I just don't see the point in restricting this business. Because Jenny sell, as I sold, anybody who's bought thirty-five Downfall Road and wanted to do something has faced this. That property was for sale for an extremely long time, okay? If people in this room wanted to control thirty-five Downfall Road and what its uses were, they had every opportunity, there's enough of them in here, to get together and buy it. It's sold for very short money, okay? I'm in the real estate business. I develop a lot of it, okay? That property sold for short, short money, okay? And there's plenty of people in the room that have money to buy it, okay? But for you to allow somebody to buy the property and every person who's shown up here to do anything has had to face this, it's kinda ridiculous, right? In my book, right? So that's my two cents. I sent you a letter, okay? No matter what anybody does, whether it's Jenny or anybody else coming forward, moves into this town, they shouldn't have to face cameras, people taking logs of, of cars, okay? Filming me or anybody else. There seems to be a double standard depending on which end of Downfall Road you live on, okay? And either we allow it or we don't allow it. But it shouldn't be allowed anywhere on Downfall Road if we're not gonna allow it here. But if we're sitting here arguing, and I, I gotta tell you, I almost find it ridiculous, right? That we're arguing over four round trips of a vehicle on a road, I gotta tell you. I haven't seen this much activity on the road in all the years I've owned the property since two thousand and nine. But apparently, it's a very busy road, you know? So from my perspective, okay? People who own property ought to be able to use it for the uses allowed under the zoning, okay? And anybody who lives on Downfall Road who meets that zoning should have that opportunity. Whether it be me, anybody else in the room. That's my two cents.
So I just wanna let you know that the reason that we're going through this is because this is not allowed by zoning. So this is a special permit. So that's, that's why we're here.
I get it.
Just so, okay, great. Beautiful, thank you. Thank you, Larry.
Thank you.
Would anyone else like to give any information to the board?
My name's Ryan Meter, ninety-three Main Street. I grew up in Byfield. I'm a tenth-generation descendant here. And I've played all over this town from one end of it to another. So did all my friends growing up. We knew enough to stay out of the street. And in all of that, God bless our, our growing up twenty years, one of them got hit by a car on the other side of town. He was okay. But aside from all of that, I'd like to point out that at any point, we could remove the dogs from the situation completely. And Jenny at any time, on her private property, could invite as many people as she wanted and increase the traffic flow down there, as could anybody else. And what I'm hearing here tonight isn't the Byfield I grew up in. We weren't counting cars of people going by. We had each other's backs. We took care of each other. And that's all I'd like to say.
Thank you.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to address the board? Come on. I'm gonna, I think somebody next to you hasn't had an opportunity to speak, so come on up.
Hi, I'm Becky Mountain, nine Larkin Road. So I'm a friend of Jenny's. I'm also very nervous when publicly speaking, so, sorry. I've known Jenny for, I don't know, twenty-five, thirty years, something like that. And I've lived in Byfield for thirty-two years. So I also echo the previous comments that this is definitely not the Byfield I grew up in. And Larkin Road, as some of you know, is also now a dead-end street and also very narrow at points. So I also am sympathetic to the whole not being able to play in the street like we used to. I learned to ride my bike there. Obviously, would not have any kids learning to ride their bike on Larkin Road anymore. I was thinking about this, like, about a week ago. I took my dog for a walk on Larkin Road. And in the twenty minutes I was out there, I saw six cars go by me and had to get off to the side where there's no sidewalk. So definitely, the traffic is a problem throughout Byfield. And I understand that everyone here on the side of the room feels that Jenny is responsible for the increased traffic on Downfall Road because of her business. But I'd also like to say that I actually visit Jenny a lot less now that she has her business going so wonderfully than I would have normally. So in terms of her having more of her friends and family over, I think we actually would probably visit a lot more and there would be more trips without her business. So I don't know if that really goes to some of the points here. But then the, the point that I really wanted to make was that we haven't really talked about the benefits of Jenny's business. And I think that's what's really critical here. The small business, you know, that we should be promoting in Newbury. I think Jenny's is such a great example. I think someone on this side last time even said that, someone at soccer or something said how great Seacoast K9 was. And I think that's really what we should be focusing on. Jenny not only provides an invaluable service to the residents of Byfield, Newbury and the greater Newbury area, but she also provides employment, both part-time and full-time to people. And I think that's just amazing. And she has dedicated her whole life to this. Like, I've no, I've watched her through college, learning how to do this. And her and Dory, learning how to even train tigers. I mean, it was absolutely incredible. And so she's been building this from just a few dedicated clients to what it is now, which is absolutely amazing. And I'm super proud of her and I think all of Newbury should be, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Would anyone else like to address the board? Anybody that hasn't spoken? Okay, Ben. Oh, come on. You were waiting to be the last person?
Noreen Waddell, two Lenway Road. So I grew up in Newport. You can say, this isn't the Byfield we grew up in. And it's not. There are more people, more cars these days. But the bottom line is, you said it yourself, it's not zoned for this. So why are we even having this discussion? You allowed it, but it's not zoned. And these are our lives. We live in this neighborhood. I would never have purchased in this neighborhood had I known it was gonna be like this. It's the biggest investment of our lives. These are our ho, our homes, our houses, children on the street. You know, so you said it yourself, it's not zoned for it.
Before you go, help me to understand a little bit more. You're in Lenway, right?
Yes.
Okay, the traffic doesn't go by your home?
I walk my dogs down there, my little dogs. Cars are going up and down all the time. All the time. It's, it's changed. I moved in in two thousand and five. It's nothing like this. And I totally support small businesses. I volunteer at a rescue. I love dogs, but it's the traffic. None of you live on this road. It's a, it's a, you know, dead ends all around. So, you know, it's, it's our lives, it's our neighborhood. The traffic is just crazy. And I don't know who this other business is that another dog business on Downfall Road is. That's news to me.
It's just someone who walks a dog.
So it's a business? Yeah, that's, that's all I have to say.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Would anyone else like to say anything that hasn't spoken yet? Anybody else? You sure? Because there are people that I think just wanna jump up at the microphone, I can tell. Okay. A minute, do you wanna say something?
Sure. Of course I do. Amanda Cannon, thirty-two, Downfall Road. I hope that you guys realize we are not vashing small business at all. We have people that are self-employed. We have people that work for small businesses. We have, we shop, like, we have no problem with small businesses at all. I think it's amazing to have somebody be able to grow something from so little or nothing to something amazingly great and be able to be profitable, have employees, have, be able to buy a house, be able to do those type of things. That's not what we're saying. We're saying putting a business at the end of our road. No matter what type of business that would cause fifteen hundred trips a year or even more, that's the problem. We're not having a problem, we're not saying that you aren't amazing with dogs. We aren't saying that those things in our community aren't amazing, that we don't need them. We aren't saying that. We're saying the location of an area that's not zoned for this, to have it, is what we have an issue with. That's the problem that we have an issue. And I would love for my children to be able to roam the streets that we've been hanging out on for years, since I was in high school, that we don't have sidewalks. If my children wanna ride a bicycle, they have to ride on the side of a street. It's, it's not saying that they need to stay off the road. My children are more than welcome to ride their bicycles around the neighborhood. That again, you're saying this isn't the Byfield that you grew up in. Downfall Road is the Byfield that I grew up in. And we're trying to keep it the Byfield that we grew up in to where families can have a block party at the end of the street, that we can have a cookout, that the kids can ride around and go everywhere. We're trying to keep that, that. We're not trying to make it commercialized, make all these businesses pop up in areas that aren't supposed to. We're trying to keep our area the same area that we wanna be able to have our grandchildren in, have our kids grow up, have us have an amazing school system, and be able to have the same local community that we all grew up in. We all grew up in Byfield. We, you can go down to the mini-mart, you know everybody. You know what's going on. And to have a business at the end of the road, that's what our issue is. It's nothing to do, I promise, with having a small business flourish in Byfield. I'm not saying that. But on a main road, that would make a little bit more sense to me. And again, how you guys commented of, you guys have no control over who visits to drive by your potential clients. I understand, I said that last time. You have no control over, and this guy literally said, oh yeah, I just drove by a couple of times just 'cause he wanted to see what was going on. That's not, that's something that you guys don't have control over. And I made that crystal clear. But unfortunately, he would've never driven down By, Down, Downfall Road if he didn't know or if he wasn't potentially looking for the doggy daycare for his dog. Like, those are trips that nobody has control over. We have peo, we've had a person come down not realizing that it's a dead-end road. But having people scout out an area, 'cause I would if I'm sending my children to a daycare, I wanna drive by, I wanna see what type of traffic. I wanna see what kind of area it is. If it is everything that they say that it is in pictures, somebody that's gonna send their dog, I'm gonna assume that they're gonna check it out. So that again, is not something that you guys unfortunately have control over. So, that again is not something that you guys unfortunately have control over. That is business trips that would not be on this road if a commercial business wasn't at the end of it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to?
I am Dory Rosati, um, formerly of thirty-five Downfall Road. Um, I would like to say I'm hearing a lot of focus on how Downfall Road, the neighborhood, is all about kids and family and looking out for each other. I moved in September, um, two thousand and seventeen while I was, uh, eight months pregnant. Uh, no one came to visit me when I had a baby. None of these wonderful neighbors came to say hello, congratulations on your new baby. Um, I used to walk my dogs and the stroller, my newborn, up and down that road. Not a single neighbor has ever said hello to me, uh, cared about my child. For two years, we had the youngest resident on Downfall Road. That didn't seem to matter. Um, I'm still there every day, visiting my best friend, uh, my former roommate, um, with my now-two-year-old, who absolutely loves to play on Downfall Road at that eighteen-acre farm that he grew up on. We will still be there every day making traffic as a friend of Jenny's, his Aunt Nini. Uh, he's gonna go visit his Aunt Nini every day and go play on that farm. Um, it, I get that this neighborhood sounds really great and I wish that I'd had that for my son. Um, it would've been nice to feel that camaraderie, um, moving from Florida up here to Massachusetts, pregnant, knowing only Jenny. Um, it would've been nice to have some of that community support that I'm hearing so strongly, uh, in this room. Just for what it's worth.
Would anyone else like to talk, uh, about? Come on up, sure.
Erica O'Neil, I'm on, uh, Four Lenway, and I just have to jump in with what Dory said, cause I've only moved in just recently myself. I moved in, uh, December of twenty sixteen. I moved in because we came down the neighborhood, it was nice and quiet. Um, and I'm sorry that, that was your experience, but this neighborhood has accepted me like I've lived there my whole life and my family. And it's, it's been great and I just have to say I love it. Um, and I moved in because of how quiet it was. And it concerns me when my daughter's riding down the road on her bike and, um, I'm just throwing my two cents in because I'm sorry that happened to you, but it's definitely not the feel of the neighborhood.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Would anyone else like to make a comment today? All right, Ben, did you wanna make a closing thing?
I wanted to, um, because we have some decisions to make, I wanted to respectfully ask whether the, we could get a sense of uh, where the board is at, uh, before the public hearing, um, is closed. Um, and so I just make that request because we need to, um, assess our options and I wanted to, um...
So you'd like to take a straw poll of the?
Uh, that would be ideal if that is something that the board is willing to entertain. And the proposal on the table would be a, um, a six-month special permit with the, uh, controls and conditions that we've talked about, which would be the, uh, four round trips, uh, per day. Uh, the flashers, um, and I think those are sort of the main, the main ones. But, uh, I, I would appreciate that opportunity if the board is so inclined.
Okay, um, George, did you hear all that?
Yes, I did.
Okay, so what, uh, we've been asked, the board has been asked for a straw poll, uh, a, a, a sense of, uh, where the, uh, board might, uh, vote on this, uh, on this, um, uh, six-month, uh, proposal. Um, Martha, do we have to do anything different, uh, language-wise, because we're changing our, our request of a special permit? Cause was, was it, was it a renewal of the special permit for a year originally?
It's renewing. I don't think there was a timeframe necessarily set to it. It was just, the original permit was good for a year.
Okay, and that expired in December?
That expired this month.
Right.
Um, I think the board would probably need to make the same kinds of findings. Um, I'll turn to our council for that.
And ma'am, Mr. Chairman, just to clarify your question.
Yes.
Are you saying, is the board's role in granting a special permit different? Because this is a renewal situation versus an original special permit?
Yes.
Is that the question? So the answer to that is no. The way we structured the original special permit, it was to either expire and be subject to renewal. But your obligations as a board in either renewing it or granting a new special permit, it's a distinction without a difference. You have to make the same findings. And, um, if I may just go a little bit further, if you'll allow me another minute or two.
Sure.
Just to refocus the board on what those findings were. Um, the board has to, of course, make factual findings and determinations, but ultimately there are criteria in the bylaw. And in order to grant a special permit, there's four specific criteria that the board has to find. Call them determinations of law, conclusions of law, or findings, what have you. But it's the same as granting the underlying special permit. So just to reiterate, and I'll try to be as brief as possible. The first one is that, uh, the use would not be injurious or obnoxious to the neighboring properties. Two, will satisfy a community need or convenience not otherwise being served. Three, will not affect abutting and nearby properties by increasing traffic and on-street parking. And four, that nothing connected with the use, building structure such as machinery vehicles, et cetera, uh, shall be stored between the street line and the front line of the structure building. So in order to renew, in order to grant a new special permit, this board would have to, well, four members, the four voting members, would have to affirmatively make those four findings. So that's the role of the board in hearing this.
George, you get all that?
I did.
Okay. Um, Larry, do you wanna take a straw poll on this thing? Make a comment with that?
I have a question for Brian. Is there a distinction between an extension and a renewal?
No.
Uh, it, it, this is not an easy decision, obviously. I, uh, have every respect for Jenny and what you do. I, I admire your energy and, and your creative creativity. Um, for me, as I said earlier, it comes down to, um, public safety. Okay? Um, I understand what the neighbors say, they don't like the increased traffic, but things change, it's a public street. Once again, for me, it comes down to public safety. Uh, but then we have the, uh, the criteria in the bylaw that says that we apparently have to make a finding that it's not going to increase traffic though. Is that correct, Brian?
That's correct.
Um, which makes it difficult. I, 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 I mean, the last thing in the world I would want to do would be to pull the rug out from under them. People, you know, depending on their livelihoods for this business. My inclination would be an extension for a sufficient amount of time to allow Jenny to trans- transition over to the Salisbury, uh, location. Uh, well, one-time extension is what I'm thinking. But, uh, I'm not sure that we can do that.
So, just so I understand, Larry, um, this would be basically an exit strategy?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
And so that's where you're positioned?
I think so, yeah. I mean, I, I, I'm, I'm willing to listen, believe me, you know? I'm not intransigent on that position, but...
Right, but to just renew for another six months, just to continue it as, as is and to monitor, you're not in favor of that type of a?
Uh, we're gonna be back here having the same discussion in six months.
I understand.
You know?
Do you want me to continue the poll? Because you need all four people, you're hearing from one right now. I, I can continue the poll.
I, I, I would like to continue the poll, yes.
Okay, George, would you like to weigh in here?
Uh, not to weigh in. I agree with Larry because of the conditions that, uh, Brian set forth. Uh, I would go ahead with a six-month extension or try to close it down if I had to leave.
Okay, so basically George is of the position that there would be an extension granted, understanding that the, uh, this would be an exit strategy. So you're having two members of the board that are saying basically, there wouldn't be support for extending six months. They'd be in support of extending it six months for, for an exit strategy. So I-
Six months and then, and then ending it essentially, not entertaining?
Correct, right.
A renewed period of time.
Right. Do you want me to continue?
Yes, please.
Okay, um, Les?
Well, I think what Jenny's doing is, um, providing great service for the community. But the criteria is pretty well set in stone. And it's, I would like to see the six-month extension to, for, for the exit, so it makes it easier instead of just shutting it right down.
So you'd, you'd be in favor of?
The extension.
Of the extension and, and monitoring the situation?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Wow, okay. Well, now that I have the floor and I have your attention, uh, no.
That will get some wisdom.
Really, no, I, I don't have, I don't have wisdom. Um, this is, this is, this is difficult. This is a difficult situation for this board to be placed in, quite honestly. Um, because it's almost like a no-win situation. Um, I have concerns about traffic volume. I, I don't wanna be in the, I don't wanna have somebody being in the business of counting cars. I think that's, that's unfair to everyone. Um, and I wouldn't wanna violate your privacy by having somebody looking at a camera to find out who's going in, when, where, and all that sort of stuff. Um, I asked, I asked a question, which for me is very important. I asked you if you had any plan to transition this business or to decrease the volume, uh, in this next six months, and you said no. Um, now, if you said, well, yeah, I'm gonna scale it down, you know, another thirty percent, then I'm gonna scale it down ten percent. I'm only gonna bring three dogs a, a, a day here because they need space to run, I'd say, okay, I can probably live with that. But the way that it is right now and the impact that it's having, and in reviewing our, our bylaw, which is our guidance as to what this board's supposed to do, I wouldn't be able to support this.
What did you say, Pete? I'm sorry, that you wouldn't?
I would not be able to support this. Would not be able to support it, yeah. So, you have, you don't have four members voting in, in support of, uh, of the situation, so that's a straw poll. Now, we haven't, you know, we haven't, we haven't voted on this. And as we continue to, to tiptoe down, down this road now, um, you have a sense of where the board is positioned. Um, uh, and, and I, and I am in support of, of what, what a business is. I mean, I started off with a small business and, you know, I, I grew a business. Um, I had to transition my location to do that, um, twice. Um, and, um, that was a different type of a, of a venue, but that is something that I had to do as a business owner. So the question is now, if we close our public hearing now and we render a decision, it would be a, a defined decision. Um, and then that would put a period to the end of the discussion.
Understood, um, two, two questions. One, um, did you say, Mr. Chairman, that you would not be in support of the idea of a six-month wind down?
Um, I would be in support of a wind down. I would not be in support of what you had suggested, which was continuing this for six months and to review it. Um, right.
But I, I don't wanna put words in, um...
My mouth? Okay, thank you.
No, any other members?
Okay.
I, your position is clear, but I think that some of your colleagues have, have, have also said, if I understood it correctly, that they might be in support of a, essentially a six-month wind down.
And, and honestly, um, we could conclude this special permit, uh, with the understanding that you're going to wind the business down. You know, without ha- having to come before this board to do anything. You know, it's an understanding, okay, we're not going to renew the special permit. You know, it's, it's in your best interest to start to wind this down, uh, and, uh, make, make the transition.
Well, and so, and the other, the second question I was going to ask is, is that, uh, once we conclude this particular, um, Q and A, whether we could take a, maybe a ten-minute recess so that, um...
We sure can.
Jenny and I can confer on that.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, however, one additional point in, in the discussion is that if the board were inclined to vote four to zero to extend the permit for six months in order for the special permit, um, operation to be wound down.
Yes.
You know, the, the, this is perhaps a discussion, not really for this board necessarily, I bring it up in any event, where the home occupation provisions of the bylaw, um, have, you know, several criteria to them. But one of those criterions is, um, to non-resident employees. So, you know, in winding down a business or accelerating a transition to Salisbury, um, arguably, under the home occupation rules of the town, which are as of right, um, there would be the ability, as Jenny did when she lived in the house that I grew up in at one oh nine Main Street, of running a, her, her business under the home occupation rules, which the town permitted during that period of time when she was on Main Street and she had only two non-resident employees working on Main Street.
So, before you go too much further, I wanna ask Martha the question of the, uh, of the as-of-right, uh, home occupation for this type of business.
Right. So a couple of things. I, I know when Jenny initially came before and talked to both Sam and me about, um, setting up home occupation, it was, it was a rather different nature. I think it was gonna be like one-on-one training at her home. It seemed to fit very well into the home occupation.
It was still a four-hour training and playgroup, which is what we do now, just on a smaller scale.
Okay, and we may, you know, we may not have understood completely, but I think bottom, bottom line is, under our zoning, doggy daycare is a use that requires a special permit. So whether you're running it sort of effectively, and Brian, please correct me if I'm wrong, if you're running it, you know, as a, as a home occupation, it's still the use of a doggy daycare, having groups of dogs there for periods of time requires a special permit under our zoning.
And, and if I may?
Please.
That particular question isn't really before the board.
Yeah.
Uh, it's a question for your zoning enforcement official. Once it becomes an, an arguably non-special permitted use, zoning enforcement officials have to make a determination. Whichever way that goes, that can be appealed to the ZVA. If the determination is that it's a use that requires a special permit, then it may have to come back to this board. Um, but if there's no special permit for a doggy daycare use under your zoning bylaw, your zoning official will say, you cannot have that use any longer. There's no special permit that authorizes it. And that's the end of the role of the board. So whether or not there's some other, hesitate to use the word use, cause we're kinda using it in two contexts at the same time. But if there's some other ability under a home occupation, which is a by-outright use, to make a beneficial use of the property, that's a question for your zoning enforcement official another day. It's, you, you can't make a determination today as to what would constitute a home occupation under this special permit proceeding. That's another way to put it.
Okay, thank you. Um, hold on. Um, Larry, do you have any thoughts? Because what we need to do now is negotiate the, the path that we're gonna go on, or we could take a, a quick five-to-ten-minute, uh, break in activities.
Did you, did you want some time to talk?
Um, yes, but, but if there are other things that the board members have to say that are relevant to the-
I, I mean, do you, well, if, if I may?
Sure.
Uh, is it worth your time to pursue a home, the home occupation avenue with the building inspector? Uh, have you talked to him?
Right.
Maybe it's a better way to put it.
No, I don't think it's been in discussions since the time that you've been on Downfall Road because of the special permit, um, being in place, so... Um, but those would be the kinds of discussions that we would engage in during this six-month.
I mean, so everyone understands, if I may, Pete?
Sure.
Uh, it, what, what we're talking about here is an as-of-right use. And what, what we're talking about, the council was suggesting, is exploring that, which would take it out of the jurisdiction of this board and essentially make the special permit, uh, vote, I guess.
But we would-
It depends on what would happen next.
Right, yeah.
I mean, there, there are a couple of options. Uh, the board can take a vote. That vote could go in the affirmative, it could go in the negative. Um, the applicant could make a choice on their own. That may negate the, the need for the board to take the vote. But until we know the answer to that question, we, we can't answer that one.
So if it's okay, what I'd like to do at this time is just take about a ten-minute break. Um, and, uh, then we'll come back and reconvene. So we're just gonna take a quick ten-minute break, folks.
Can I have a clarification on something?
We're just gonna take a quick ten-minute break, okay? Thanks.
I'm not allowed to vote on this, right?
Our 10-minute recess. I appreciated everybody's cooperation through that process. And so, Ben, I want to have you.
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
So, George is still here, yes.
Oh, right.
George, you still hear everything?
Yes, I am.
Beautiful, thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. So, we would like to propose to the board the six-month wind-down special permit that was discussed. This would be in the nature of an extension, even though, as Attorney Winner has said, it's really a distinction, not a difference. It's a new special permit, but it would be six months. It would be with the understanding that it would not be renewed, that it was for purposes of accelerating a transition. And, you know, whether you'd call it a wind-down or whatever you would call it, I think the common understanding is that it would be in the nature of something that had a finite period of six months and no longer. So, that is something that we would propose to the board under all of the circumstances and would hope that that could gain the support of all four voting members. And so, that's really all I have to say.
Okay. Thank you, Count. Brian, thoughts on this, on this proposal?
Again, the criteria that the board would have to vote are the same. irrespective of the duration that the permit would issue for. You'd still be issuing a new permit. So, I think the question has shifted a little bit. But in terms of what happens during the six months and what happens at the end of the six months, doesn't really change the board's role. I should also mention that at the end of six months, even though the permit could state that there's no new renewal period or option, there's nothing to stop anyone from applying for a new special permit. So, I mean, that's state law. You have the ability to do that. So, a new application could be filed. So, whether or not the special permit expires or is denied tonight or expires at the end of six months, the only thing that's going to change is what? That's the question for the board. What would happen during the six months? Would you be back here at the end of that period entertaining a new application? You don't know. Would anything actually happen on-site that you might not be aware of because there wouldn't be any further ongoing public hearing before this board? So, once the board takes its vote, if it's to grant it, then the permit just gets written, it gets drafted, it gets recorded, it gets filed in the town clerk's office, and this board's out of it. If it gets denied tonight, or the board takes some other action on it tonight, then the board's role is concluded, and it becomes a question for zoning enforcement. It becomes a compliance and enforcement issue. So, nothing happens automatically by virtue of the board's vote. They don't automatically have to transition. They've now got six months to take any action. If the board votes to not issue any extension or no new special permit, nothing happens automatically either in that case. It becomes a question for Sam, your building inspector, your zoning enforcement official, to determine whether or not there's non-compliance, to determine whether or not there is compliance, and then what to do about it. So, in either event, it leaves this board's jurisdiction. So, I don't know if that helps with the analysis of what your choices mean. I hope it does. But that's the substance of the question before the board.
George, do you have any thoughts?
Yeah, based upon the four criteria, at least one or two of them, my opinion is that the board did not grant a new special permit. I think Brian would agree with that. And if that's the case, then Jenny would have to deal with the building commissioner, potentially the zoning board of appeals. And you have no idea how they're going to act, or the building commissioner. But at this point, it's out of the board's hand.
So, your feeling is, based on the criteria of the bylaw, it makes it difficult to support.
We can't justify issuing a new special permit at this point.
Could I speak to the criteria whenever appropriate time?
Yeah, yeah, so thank you. Larry?
Who, me?
I know, I know. Based on
No, I, George's point is well-taken, but I, at the same time, I'm just searching for a way around what's a difficult situation.
So, if we deny this permit, and I'm sorry, Leslie, did you want to? I didn't ask you to chime in.
No, I think I've already kind of decided.
So, if we deny this permit tonight, the business will wind down on a timetable that will be agreed upon between the enforcing agent and the applicant.
I don't know that the enforcing agent has the authority to agree to a wind down, does he? It's either in compliance or it's not. But I guess it's not our problem.
Might I use the word agreement?
Yep.
He issues orders.
I'm sorry.
He issues orders.
Yeah.
He'll make a finding if it's in compliance or not in compliance. Those orders are appealable, but that takes its own separate course. So, I think that's what you were saying. I'm just paraphrasing.
So, what we're guided by now are our bylaws and the requirements.
No, I think George is absolutely right on the law.
Yep.
I think he is. And I think that's Brian's advice. On the other hand, you know, we've got people who are, livings are dependent on this business, and one that has been approved by this board and permitted to exist for the last year. I hate to do it, but here's my suggestion, because I don't like the idea of kicking the can down the road.
Okay.
I suggest that this hearing be continued for another month and take a vote at that time.
Okay.
Maybe give you guys an opportunity to get your ducks in a row. Maybe talk to the building commissioner, see what you can do.
Okay. So, Leslie, understanding that the way the by, the threshold that we would have to meet if we decided to vote this evening.
It has to be unanimous.
It would have to be unanimous for it to work. And number two, the concern is the bylaws and meeting the requirements of the bylaws. If we continue this, if we continue this, we don't close the hearing. We come back in a month. It gives the applicants an opportunity to explore avenues with enforcement, which might be able to be creative. And then we can, at that point in time, see if there's any other additional information to discuss.
That would be the consequence of continuing it for a month.
Right.
And just to reiterate, we've said it a couple of times. Of course, you're familiar with the criteria, but just in terms of the effect of what happens when this board concludes its process, there isn't anything that happens automatically.
Well, we can close the hearing tonight, can't we not? And just deliberate.
But what I mean is, whether or not you take the vote tonight or take the vote in a month, that doesn't mean your zoning enforcement official runs out and issues an order and takes any action. So, postponing the decision doesn't necessarily alter the timeline that Sam would operate under.
Okay.
Yeah.
I hear you.
Yeah. Why not make a decision now instead of extending it for another month? Because it will take on a life of its own after we make the decision.
Once the decision's made.
And technically, we're in a gray area right now procedurally.
Correct.
You're, it's under consideration by the board, and in my experience, building officials don't necessarily take enforcement action while a permit's under consideration. Obviously, there might not be an enforcement action if the permit's granted that authorizes the use. So, they usually allow something to continue, and they don't get involved while it's under consideration. So, every month that it's under consideration is a month where he's not getting involved in making these determinations and evaluating what's allowable and what isn't. So, it would postpone that. It would postpone that process for a month. That would be the effect of continuing.
George, any additional thoughts?
Well, at some point, and I'm very sympathetic, at some point, we have to make a decision, whether it's now
Yeah.
or next month or two months. It just really doesn't matter. We can't make a different decision.
Right.
Unless somebody else complies with different criteria, we're pretty much locked where we are.
Then the question becomes, why delay? What is the, you know, what is the benefit to Jennifer, to the town, ultimately, to those who have participated in the public hearing? What is the benefit?
Can you let speak to that? Does, will there be a timeline in order for, if there is a if we let the special permit go, is there a timeline that Jenny has before she has to transfer everybody over to the Salisbury facility?
There's no statutory or legal requirement for how soon someone has to comply. It's up to your enforcement official. So, the sort of technical, overly formalistic answer is, once you don't have a special permit, you're immediately out of compliance, unless you cease the use that required the special permit. So, that's overly simplistic. It's being very formal. But, like I said, nothing happens automatically. So, the process, I'm sure you're familiar with it. There's usually an investigation, a finding made, a cease and desist order, and so on. a finding made, a cease and desist order, and so on and so forth. There's a process for making a finding that a business is not in compliance, or a use is not in compliance.
Right, so that becomes a strategic decision for the owner of the business, not for us.
Right, and I don't, couldn't venture a guess as to what that timeline would be.
Correct.
If Stan's not here and I certainly don't speak for him, so it could be tomorrow, it could be today, I have no idea. But it's not a decision that this Board ever makes.
Jenny, I just want to ask a question. Is your Salisbury facility large enough to accommodate all of your business?
No. Is it possible for me to ask clarification for something?
Sure.
So when we did this last year, the criteria was the same, correct? In terms of traffic and use and impact? And so last year, the Board determined that it was not an excessive impact in terms of traffic, but we're asking for a decrease in traffic, and it is a breach of the criteria that was not a breach of criteria last year. I just, right, that's what we're saying.
Well, I think what we did last year, honestly, was we negotiated a process.
Yeah.
We tried to, we tried to make a deal to keep everybody happy, and it didn't work.
Right.
And that's why we're here. Well, we're here because you had to renew the permit. And during that, during that time, if everything worked wonderfully, people would come in and say, "Everything's fine, there is an issue." It would be presented to us that there is an issue, and we could say, "Everything's fine, there is an issue." But what we've heard from is that there is an issue, there are concerns, we have, we have a bylaw that directs us that if that's the case, that we have to act upon that. And it's difficult, as I said. This isn't an easy position for a Board to be put in or for you to be put in, because it's directing us to tell you that this is not going to work.
Right, so...
And the last thing I want to do is, you know, put you out of business, because I don't want to put you out of business, but the good news is you have another location where you can transition business. But this is going to sound awful, that's not the Board's concern. The Board's concern is what's driven by our bylaws and what we have to do in the best interest of those.
If we vote tonight, okay, obviously, a decision has to be prepared and filed with the town clerk. What's the timeline on that? Anybody help us?
Once the decision is voted on, it's 14. It has to be filed in 14 days.
Realistically, it's the amount of time it takes for Martha and I to prepare a decision for the Board to adopt and sign.
Well, normally, what we, our usual practice...
We're not going to take the whole period of time.
Is to request that Martha prepare a draft decision based on the Board's discussions. We come back, we review that, and then take a formal vote at that time. Do I have that correctly? In which case, it would still be, I forget the term you used, under review, under consideration by the Board. I mean, we would do that regardless.
Correct.
Right. And how much time are we talking about?
That's how we typically do it.
Right.
Right, correct.
How much time are we talking about?
How much time does Martha need?
That's really kind of Brian.
So we're probably looking at...
Be ready for your next meeting.
Yeah, next meeting or the meeting after. So within two to four weeks, I would think, depending on the holiday schedule and all that sort of stuff, right?
When is the next meeting?
January 8th.
8th.
All right. With that holding thought process, Ben, did you want to, did you want to say anything additionally? Any additional new information or requests?
I think that Jenny made an excellent point about the findings. I mean, last year and the decision, it was the same criteria. I take your point as to how the process unfolded, but nonetheless, this Board decided that each of the criteria of the special permit section of the bylaw were met. And some of those are, for example, will this use satisfy a community need or convenience not otherwise being served? So when a community need or convenience not otherwise being served, and so when someone in the audience came up and talked about, you know, let's focus on some of the positive things that the business does, that speaks to that particular criterion. So it's not all one-sided view as to counting of cars. And even that particular one talks about whether properties will be affected by increased traffic, not will there be increased traffic, will it have an appreciable effect on properties? Now, a year ago, the Board decided that...
Now, mind you, when the Board did this, we were all under the awareness that this was the first time we'd ever done this.
Mm-hmm.
We had not, you know, we had not, we have, we tried to negotiate as best we could, something that appeared to fit for everyone.
Mm-hmm.
But where we're at now...
Right.
Is a situation where it hasn't fit. And so we've been trying to modify that.
Right. I understand, but that is, that is one of five criteria. And as Jenny said, we're offering to reduce the traffic number by, my math is never great, but from six to four. So I guess that's 33% reduction. And so that should be taken into account. Again, as she said, it passed muster last year, I understand everything you just said, Mr. Chairman. And so to sort of automatically say this year it won't, it seems odd, given that it's a reduction in the scope of the business. And again, that's one of five criteria, and there are other ones, best interests of the town, not the best interests, respectfully, of Downfall Road, the best interests of the town. That should take into account things like promotion of small business, employment, services to members of the town, all of which are things that tilt the scales very much in favor of the business. If you're going to, you know, only focus on one particular criterion and deny businesses based on that, then you're doing a disservice to the other criteria that talk about what's in the overall best interest of the town, what will satisfy a community need. We all know that, you know, more and more and more people, as Jenny's success as a business owner shows, need care for their dogs. So it serves a quite tremendous community need. So I think that, based on a more comprehensive view of the criteria, and based on the Board's, I think, desire to, to not pull the rug out from under this business, the six-month wind down that we talked about before we took the break makes eminent sense. And Attorney Winner is correct that the Board would still have to make findings. But I would try to press upon the Board that, you know, particularly given that the findings were made last year, the Board doesn't need to engage in an overly formalistic analysis of those findings. I mean, I don't believe that the bylaw mandates that each and every one, it's usually a balancing analysis. And part of that balance should be a period of time to allow for an orderly transition. And I'm sorry, I don't know your name.
Mary.
Mary. So you asked, what would the benefit be of delaying the decision? And I know that was in the context of, you know, of pushing it out a meeting or two, which is not something we think is the right way to go, that the six-month wind down is different. But the benefit of any kind of, of any action that is different from simply denying the permit tonight, or forcing us to withdraw the permit application tonight, the benefit to Jenny is clear, that those particular actions would pull the rug out from under a business and result in, you know, at least one or two of the people here tonight probably losing their jobs. And so there's clearly a benefit to not taking an action tonight that would set in motion an enforcement process. We think the wind down proposal makes eminent sense, and that it's totally justifiable under the bylaws, particularly based on the decision that the Board made last year on a project that is more intense and larger in scope than the current proposal.
Thank you. All right. Martha, would you like to say anything? Okay. Leslie, do you have anything? George, do you have anything?
No, not really. I think I've already made, said what I wanted to say. Notwithstanding the permit that was issued last year is somewhat irrelevant, the criteria not satisfied this year, they were negotiated last year. And I think the Board has to make a decision, I think, to say that, one, the permit that was issued is now expired, and the Board does not have the authority to issue a new one. Is that consistent with your thinking, Brian?
George, I think the point I completely agree with is that whether or not the criteria were found to have been met a year ago is irrelevant. You have a year's worth of empirical data, information, knowledge, and you're entitled as a Board to weigh not just the proposal submitted by the applicant, but the totality of the evidence derived from the public hearing. So you have much more to work on than just the representation and just what occurred a year ago. So the question is, with a fair view to everything this Board has heard during the two nights of this year's public hearing, can you make those findings?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Any thoughts?
Oh, thanks. Brian, your point's taken. We made a decision, we have new information. The Board, by polling, will not support the...
Informal straw poll, we haven't taken a vote.
We haven't. Our informal straw poll has direct, sends the direction of the needle in that the, the application would not be renewed, it would be denied, as the application is. And so now it's a, it's a matter of how and when, when that happens, I think. And that's, I think, where we're at. If you want to give any additional guidance on that thought process...
May I say something?
Sure, Mary.
I can't vote on this tonight because I have, I'm a newbie. However, your point is well-taken, that the six months would give Jennifer an exit strategy in time. It makes sense for her, from her perspective and the employees, et cetera. However, given the criteria that we have to work with, we really do have to think about the fact that we can't issue another six-month permit because we're not really in compliance with the criteria anymore, any longer. Correct?
Yeah, no, it's just a question of how do we do it? Mechanically, again, typically, we would ask the, you know, give some direction to our town planner, ask her to prepare a draft decision, and then continue the public hearing and come back at that time and formally vote.
I would, I'd entertain that motion.
Any suggestions to a continued date? Want to do, I'm looking at Martha now. Do you want to do the first meeting in January, second meeting in January?
My next meeting is the 8th.
8th.
And as far as I know, we don't have any public hearings scheduled for that night.
January 8th?
No.
Okay. So if you'll entertain the motion, I'd move that we continue the public hearing until our January 8th meeting at 7:15 p.m.
And in the interim?
And in the interim, request that the town planner prepare a draft decision, consistent with the deliberations of the Board.
Mr. Chairman?
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Is there a discussion on the motion?
I have a conflict on the 8th, that's what I wanted to raise.
All right.
Okay. Yep. So in our discussion, we were determining that we might want to change our date. Would the 22nd work?
It should. On the 8th, I have a native planning board meeting.
That's okay, that's okay.
The 22nd...
You mean, you can't be here?
Yes. I also have a native planning board meeting on the 22nd, but I'll find a replacement for one of, one or the other of the meetings, which will be harder to do on the 8th. So the 22nd would, Jenny, if that works for you.
All right, I'll amend my motion to continue it to January 22nd at 7:15 p.m.
All right. On the amendment, any discussion? Okay, on the amendment, all in favor?
Aye. We need a roll call.
Oh, we need a roll call, yes, thank you very much. George, on the amendment?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Larry?
Yes.
Leslie?
Yes.
Okay. Peter, yes. On the original motion to direct?
As amended.
As amended. George?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Leslie?
Yes.
Peter, yes. Okay. Very good. I don't think we're going to be having any further discussion this evening. Wow, the room got emptied out. Any other concerns anyone wants to raise tonight? Otherwise, we're going to be continuing this, this meeting. Wonderful. Thank you.
You're right on top of those roll call votes.
Well, I got to keep the chairman on the ball here.
My job to raise my hand.
No, because whenever someone is on the phone...
Folks, we're going to be continuing our, our business here, just so, continuing on our business, under old business, we have proposed zoning amendments. Unfortunately, our workshop needs to be rescheduled. And Martha, did we pick up a date for our reschedule? Okay. So folks, we're going to need you to take a look at your calendars, because we're going to need to pick a date for rescheduling our workshop. Martha, how are we looking in the beginning part of January? Sure thing.
Assuming we're doing, looking at daytime as we did before.
Yes, yes, yes.
So, you know, the 6th, the 7th.
7th, I'm not available.
That's right, it's a Tuesday.
Does anyone have a preference on a day? Is there a better day for you, Martha?
It doesn't really matter. I think the only, only day right now that's out for me would be late morning of the 2nd.
Of the 2nd? Okay. Yep.
Probably won't be available for that either.
2nd.
So...
We got the 2nd and the 3rd. We have conflicts.
So we're looking at perhaps Monday, January 6th? Does that work?
Works for me.
Okay.
Yep, works for me.
George, would that work for you?
I believe so.
Okay. And Martha, that's good for you?
Yeah.
Okay. So let's, we'll have our workshop, and that gives us plenty of time for posting?
Oh, yeah, plenty of time.
Okay, great.
1:00?
1:00. 1:00 p.m. on the 6th of January? Wonderful. Okay. New business, Borrego Solar.
And this is not... The conservation restriction is being reviewed by EEA right now, and Chris LaPointe at Essex County Greenbelt sent me a copy.
Yes.
Which was emailed out to everybody except for Leslie, who hasn't gotten it.
Can I swing by and get the...
It's actually here, yeah. So it is in your packets, and I think it's, I'm going to review it, I'd like to review it with town council, and anybody else who would like to review it?
It was 24 pages longer. Yeah, yeah, it took a...
It's long. I also included the initial decision...
Yes.
...in your packets...
Yes.
...to see what the criteria are.
This is the first time we've seen this document.
This is the first time we've seen this document. I asked Chris LaPointe at Essex County Greenbelt, who emailed it to me, whether EEA has any comments on it that they've submitted to him. I have not heard back from him yet.
I saw provisions for a farm stain, for a building to be built, some agricultural stuff to take place, up to 10 quart of wood a year to be harvested from the area, the ability to do some lumbering as well under direction. So there was a lot of things that we had not discussed in our original...
Right, so I think the question really is, is it consistent with what we were envisioning with the special permit?
Right, right, okay.
Excuse me?
Yes, George?
Yeah. I'm going to have to follow.
Okay.
I'm going to wish you all a Merry Christmas.
Okay, George, thank you very much for participating.
Same to you, George.
Thank you, George.
Hope you're feeling better.
Talk soon, thank you. Yep. Okay. Town Planner's Report.
So just getting back to that for a second. I think really, Pete, it's probably you and George mostly.
Okay, yep.
If you have comments, I'll circle back with both of you.
Okay.
But if anybody else with a legal eye wants to take a look at it and has any comments, you know, please let me know.
Because I think what we were envisioning was going to be open space, it was going to be maintained open space with public access. I think hunting was going to be, it was talked about hunting being with permission. And it was pretty, you know, it was going to be, you know, pretty simple. This is, looks a pretty complicated, detailed descriptor.
Yeah, a little bit more. I mean, I think that the key thing is that there is, you know, there are eighty acres which are going to be kept in conservation.
Right.
And it does allow for a different renewable energy generating use once the solar's done.
Decommissioned.
Decommissioned, but does not allow for any residential development or any other kind of developments. So those were-
So that's all written into the deed?
Well, it's not, it's not the deed, it's the conservation restriction that's related, that was a requirement of the special permit for the solar-
Right, no, I understand that part. Sometimes it gets written into the deed. So when the land, if the land ever got transferred again, which it probably won't.
I think this conservation restriction is impertinent.
Oh, impertinent, okay.
Signed by the state.
Good, fine.
So that's intention.
Okay.
As far as my report is concerned, just a couple of things. We did receive yesterday from Mass Housing a project eligibility letter for the forty-D on Pearson Drive. So the applicant has two years within which to submit a comprehensive permit to the zoning board and appeals. So I just wanted to let you all know that. And I've got a copy of the letter, which, if you want, I can email out to you all.
That would be great.
Related to Borrego-
If I can interrupt just really quick.
Sure.
If you were to do that right away before I got a new email account. I mean, I received responses from Martha's emails, but I don't get her emails.
So maybe, do you have a, do you have an iPhone?
Yes, I do.
So perhaps until her email's up and running, you can message her. Message her. Whatever the document is, as a way to send it, send it to her as a message rather than an email. And at least that way she'll get the stuff.
Okay.
Okay. We'll work that out.
Okay.
Beautiful.
Or I can email it to one of you guys.
And he can forward it.
Forward it to-
It won't happen.
Best-laid plans.
Okay.
Right. A couple of other things that are coming down the pike for us. We did get an A&R plan from Borrego for some lot line changes. On the U.S.A.R. property, there was an issue with frontage, first of all. So tentatively, they're going to be submitting that to us on January eighth, but there are some things that they have to work out. That plan, if it's endorsed, is not going to be consistent with the exhibit in the conservation restriction, and also probably will be exhibits in the tax agreement, which we haven't seen yet. So I need to kind of get that sorted out as well. Then the other thing we'll be getting next time is the special permit application and site plan review application for the expansion of new buried self-storage. Is that one?
Okay.
They've been putting bits and pieces together, and it wasn't ready to come. And I think, I think that's, I think that's it.
Okay. Liaisonary reports, Board of Selectmen, Leslie.
Let's see. This one goes back. Because there was one in between to- Was that?
Uh, there was one on the-
Did we have one on the eleventh?
No.
Okay. So on December tenth, they went over, mostly, uh... There was a lot of talk about two seventy-seven High Road, and the recommendations from the planning board to consent or contact for a nonprofit. A lot of people put that up and gave some really good information. That was all looked into, and nobody's strapping on board for that. There's an application for multiple amendments. One was approved for Massachusetts General Law, Chapter one thirty-eight twelve, request to, they have requests to reschedule, so it's something, license for the Rusty Can. Writing, I'm reading my scribbles. That's the majority of that. Then last night was, oh, they went, they did a long report on the quarry for who should be quarried and who shouldn't be quarried. And that was, decided that anybody who was responsible for another, like an elderly or a younger person, would be quarried. We discovered that taxpayer dollars cannot be used for, or no government agency can use tax dollars for donations. And last night, it was really long. Yeah. It was, last night, the longest discussion was for, it was a combination, well, you guys know it was a combination, but then it was for the two seventy-seven and what to do about it. They're going to... Was suggested to try to get it to a special town meeting with a warrant, but there's not enough time involved, because there's only like twenty-two days left out of the hundred and twenty days. But it was, it was a motion to not exercise the first refusal, but then changed, and continuing to a public hearing for an extension to find if we can get an extension for sixty days, and that'll be on one seventh, at seven fifteen. It was a long night.
It was a long night.
Did you want us to sign something in advance of our leaving?
Yes.
Conservation Commission will be, didn't meet because of last night's weather, so it'll be meeting, I think, in two weeks. Z.B.A.
Z.B.A.'s meeting tomorrow night. There are a couple of applications for findings from the Plum Island Ovalt district, but nothing that's likely to involve the board.
Okay. Thank you. M.B.C.
M.B.C., the, this month's commissioner's meeting is tomorrow night, actually being combined with their holiday celebration. It's also going to be a send-off for Karen Conard, their executive director, who is becoming the Portsmouth City Manager. And the search for a new executive director is moving along.
Excellent. All right. Anything else to discuss this evening? Board members? I would entertain a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Discussion, no discussion, good, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, great, thanks.
So we just have to sign a piece of paperwork?
Yeah.